Are we ready? Great, let's start. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the regular meeting of the Virgin City Council, September 27th, 2016. It's 5:30 PM. And as far as I know, we have no amendments to the agenda.
That's right.
Okay, good. We have one visitor. You're just here to hear about the revolving loan fund decision?
And I think there's something about possible alcohol in the park.
Okay, yes, that is, yeah, the beverage use on city property ordinance, okay. Warrants have been passed. Minutes, we got late today. I didn't have a chance to look at them. I think we'll just table them until the next meeting so everybody has a chance to review them and...
Send me their changes.
Okay, yeah, try and, we'll try and get them all back to you sometime the next week.
Let me just tell her what I think. I wanted to make sure that when we were talking about the ordinance on parking not being flexible, it said that not to ticket anyone unless there was snow, but I don't think that's really what we said. It's not to ticket anyone after 6:00 AM.
Well, I think there was a discussion on both points.
Was there?
So I guess I'm not sure which one we want to settle on, or maybe it's...
I don't know, I just want...
No, it said that you suggested tell the police not to ticket anyone unless there is snow. Like if it's snowing and they left their car, they're going to get a ticket, but otherwise, the police aren't going to bother if they're there. It's 6 o'clock if it's snowing.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
And I think, yeah, we did talk about that. It's a possibility. Okay, so we'll move on to five business, 5A, winter parking ban ordinance. We did have a discussion at the last meeting, and I'm not sure we came to a consensus.
I did some wording.
You did? Excellent. Would you like to share it with us?
And unfortunately, it's what I did on the paper because it was a PDF and I couldn't convert it to Word in order to do redlining, so you're going to have to go with my writing. But I thought that we had discussed the idea of having some sort of a waiver to allow, or some sort of a permit to allow for exceptions.
Like the businesses that start early or may run late?
Yeah, and so I'll read it if you can't follow all of my scrawl here. It says, "No person," and I tried to correct some of the English in this ordinance, "no person who has operated or driven a motor vehicle shall stop and leave said vehicle unattended or without being in the person's immediate control of any public street or highway within the geographical limits of the city of Virgin between the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:30 AM of any day during the month of," and I switched around, "December, January, February, and March." I'm not so sure why December was the last one. Comma, "unless a permit allowing an exception to the foregoing restrictions has been issued by the chief of police or the chief's designee." And the rest of the wording is all the same except that I changed, you can see there, after paragraph. I'm not so sure there is really here and after, "herein above" is actually a word, so I just put in "above."[264.12][264.12](Laughter).
Okay.
So, and I did check the VSA, and that is accurate because some of our ordinances have had the VSA miscited, but that's accurate.
So I guess, so the permit allows an exception to the foregoing, so that would be for anybody to apply for, and who would make that decision? The chief would make that decision?
The chief or the designee, yeah. So I don't know whether we would say, whether we follow this up with some criteria that we think should be followed by the chief, or that the chief would submit to us some criteria that he would be following for it. I'm not sure.
What do you think, Mel, you have the idea?
The permit would be good during a snowstorm. I mean, if it's snowing, we need to plow. They can't say, "Well, I have a permit to park here. We need you gone."
We've got to make sure that it's tight.
Yeah.
Well, I'm making an assumption that the chief is going to be relatively tight in how these permits are given and possibly even consulting with Public Works about, you know, what's going on, what's the weather report, that sort of thing before actually granting it.
Yeah. Ian, just for your information, we were asked last winter about a business that started at 6:00 AM and their customers would park on Main Street at 6:00, and the permits, you know, the ordinance says 6:30, and some of them got tickets. And, you know, they want to conduct a business and their clientele wants to start at 6:00, and we were trying to think of a way that that, you know, that we wouldn't ticket them unless there's a blizzard, but if it's a perfectly clear day, they shouldn't get ticketed. And you might have the same situation, you know, 2:00 AM at night, too.
They won't negate because they're late.
But I think that's where maybe there's a way to work something out, you know, for the winter parking ban, as long as it's not snowing and you're an employee downtown.
I mean, I think there's got to be an element of common sense. I mean, last winter, we got no snow. I mean, we really got no snow. The nights that my staff got tickets, there was no snow. It was 60 degrees outside, they got a ticket just because they're out there. I mean, there's got to be an element of, or just at least common decency. If you know it's my staff that's down there, just, "Hey, could you move this?" Just, you know, just something like neighborly, friendly.
Well, I mean, this would make it more formal, but you could certainly apply for the people that are working late at night, you know, and if that is something that everybody agrees to, then we can, it might be a good option for your crew and some other crews around town, too.
Yeah, I got to assume it's same with Dickie and Adria and everyone else. I mean, if we could give like a list of, like, license plate numbers of staff that would potentially be, A, coming in from an offsite or running late, if there could be just a list that buys them an hour or two, you know what I mean? Nothing major, none of them are sticking around and not staying all night, but they might be there till 1:00. And then let them get out of there, or just some timeframe if they're here to...
Well, this is actually from 2:00 AM to 6:30 AM.
That should cover it.
I mean, that's what the ban currently is. You shouldn't be getting a ticket before 2:00 AM, actually. Is that right, Mel, or not?
No, it can't. It just can't. You know, one of the things, you know, in all honesty, Ian, you know, I understand the logic about the 60 degrees, but I, I'm going to try to choose my words carefully. This ordinance is crystal clear, all right? So I, one of the things I think Ian is inferring that the police aren't doing their job when in reality, they're absolutely doing their job. This ordinance is crystal clear. Any person who violates this provision shall be fined, is here and after provided, and shall be liable for the expense. That's crystal clear. So for Ian to make like the police, you know, aren't using good judgment, the police didn't write this ordinance. The city council wrote this ordinance, okay? So if the city council wants to have this ordinance have flexibility, write it, you know, write it, okay? All right? Don't get mad at the police. The police are just absolutely doing their job.
Maybe all we need is language that says, "but in no case during a snow event."
One of the ways, a number of cities have read a whole bunch of winter city ordinances around, mostly cities that we wouldn't even show up on, you know, they probably have more snowplows than we have people. But it's a two-inch, if there's more than two inches on the ground, that's when they start towing and putting in their ban, their warning. So if there's just a dusting or nothing, then their ban is not in effect. They also deal with a lot of even odd streets, so you can park on even side of the street one night and odd side of the street the other night so that at least one side is going to be cleared and has to switch the next night so you have a two-day snow removal. Again, that's huge cities, so it's a little different thing.
I, I mean, you can completely throw this out or do some other wording. I just, I just did it on the basis of what I thought I heard from the last meeting, that there was some willingness on the council's part to have some sort of flexibility in the existing ordinance, that we didn't want to really throw out the existing ordinance, so that's why I put something in that would allow some flexibility.
Yeah. Do you think that, I mean, is the consensus here that Rennie's, is it moving in the right direction? We need clarification on the permit and the requirements of the permit? And is that something that we can talk to the chief about and maybe, you know, talk to Jimmy about, Jimmy Larry of Public Works, and just see if there's something we can come up with before the next meeting that will get us to that point? Yeah, Matt?
I guess my current feeling walking into the meeting today was that the council, my feeling is that the council shouldn't do anything in regards to changing the ordinance. And I think that the onus is on the vehicle and property owners to find alternatives to come into the council and seeking permits. And, you know, I appreciate Rennie spending the time to reword it, but, you know, we're hearing anecdotally that there is available parking opportunities within the community. And I think that responsibility goes again back to the vehicle owner and the property owners. To mirror what Ian said, I think that we should coach and counsel our police department to exercise common sense, and if there is not snow on the ground, if there's not reason, it doesn't say "has to" issue a ticket, it "may."
It does.
Has to?
Yeah, but I bet they don't give out 100% of the tickets that are potentially available out there either, so it is not 100%.
Believe me, I didn't say I love this language.
No, I know.
What I'm saying is that the police are absolutely following this language. Frankly, let me just tell you, the city of Virgin doesn't, does not survive on $25 tickets. It's not how we run. I couldn't care less about tickets, to be honest with you. You know, you could take this fine away and you could get rid of the fine and exchange it for a placard that goes underneath the windshield that tells people what our rules are, and it would accomplish, I would hope it would accomplish the same thing. It might even be better than, then, let me just tell you, we collect these $25. It's not a lot of fun collecting them, all right? And really, we don't care, all right, we don't care, Joan, about, we don't care about the money.
How many are there? Do you have any idea?
Well, I can tell you, we issue a lot more than we collect, but, but, you know, 100, 100, okay? You know, and obviously, when people get towed, they get a ticket and a towing bill, all right? So one of the things is, I'm just saying, you could do away with the ticketing, all right? And, and you could put a card out there to tell people what the rules are, and then what ends up happening is that we're only in the towing business. We're not in the ticketing business. I'm just throwing that out there, all right? I don't, you know, as I've said before, we have a system that works very good, extremely one-sided, all right? But it works amazingly well. The permit thing, I'm just, I don't know, Rennie, I, you know, I think if we were originally talking about a permit for the eight people going to Kathy Rossier's classes, I'm okay with a permit for eight people that want to do yoga at 6:00 in the morning, that doesn't bother me. I don't, I don't know how we can, relative to small city market, the fact that they open up early, I'm in bed, so if...
Yeah, 5:00 usually?
Okay, so as I mentioned before, if you really wanted to have a section of Southwater Street having a different set of hours, you're in control here, really, if you...
Even the Red Store has its own parking. You have to go down the hill, but it's there.
The Blue's?
Yeah, the Corner Store.
That's what I'm talking about.
Right, yeah.
It has another spot further down off the road.
Has off-street parking, yeah, yeah.
So I don't even know why we're really talking about this. As I, when they heard was Hans has parking that he's offered out at $1 a day, and he's only got one taker. So I'm not sure the problem is worth the four meetings that we've been talking about this. Other than correcting the English, I say we keep the, I'll make a motion that we keep the parking ban as it is and move forward.
There's a motion.
I'll second it.
Rennie?
Again, I don't care whether you have the flexibility, I just, on the basis of what I thought I heard. But my concern is, I'm not really concerned that much about the renters and finding spaces and all of that stuff. I think that when they rent, they know that that's the situation, hopefully, and certainly the landlord knows, and they should rent on that basis. My concern is any business operations that may be falling within those hours, to have the ability to have their employees or whatever the situation is exempted from it so they don't get tickets. And, and the current ordinance, the way it is written, has no flexibility whatsoever. The police may make a judgment call, that's okay, but they are not following the ordinance if they make a judgment call because the ordinance doesn't allow them to make a judgment call.
Well, should we consider changing "shall" to "may" then? Because that does give them the flexibility.
That might, that might solve it. I mean, that's, that's the only problem I have with the ordinance is it's very strict, and if they're going by what the ordinance says, that's what they have to do.
Who's the permit intended for, Rennie?
Anybody? Anybody can come and go get a permit for one of the reasons they choose? Well, yeah, they go to the chief and they, and they tell what their situation is. And like with, with small city market, I would think that, that you wouldn't have to have individual permits. You could say that small city market has a permit to allow parking in front of blah-blah for starting at 5:00 AM, you know, and then...
That's not a permit to an owner, that's a permit to a...
No, it could, it could be to an owner, but it's really like with the movement there that has, starts at 6:00, the permit would be to the movement. And I'm sure they could get a list of who the people that would normally attend so that the police would have an idea who they are, but, but it would be...
What the intention is to...
It would be individual kinds of things because I'm, as I'm, I guess this is my partnership hat on, is that I'm looking at what we can, we can do to support our business activity. And so this is one of the problems that we had is with the business activity, not with the rental stuff.
Right, but if, but if the area in front of, in and around small city had a different time than 6:30, it would accomplish the same thing, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Okay, and if we wanted to have a, you know, I, you know, I don't know about Kathy Rossier's, I understand the permit thing there because you know who your attendees are, I mean, that might work, but, but, you know, if an area is going to be okay, then change the ordinance for that area. Don't get, don't have the chief be in the permit business. I'm thinking, I have any staff over there, it's not like there's an administrative assistant that's going to handle these permits.
Well, it's still come back with the reason for the parking ban is because there's snow and we want it moved. So if there's no snow, there shouldn't be a ban that's in effect on that day. But if it snows, and that goes back to whoever's in the car, it's your responsibility to know what's going on in the weather. If it happens to snow and you didn't bother to move your car, it's getting towed.
Well, that's, we, I think we discussed that you could, you could almost say that there is, there's a snow, if there's a certain amount of snow, there's a requirement that cars be moved. In concert with that, to make sure people understand it, you raise that $25 to $200 or 125 so that they know we're serious, and if there's snow, you've got to move that car. Otherwise, we're, you know, going to be taking some real money from you, not just $25 if that's the case, but...
The parking is open during the winter unless there's snow, and if there's snow, you better move your car because it's going to be gone and it's going to cost you.
Well, an easy way to get the flexibility, but not what I have written, is to maybe say, do what Matt says and change the "shall" to "may." Then, then it allows some judgment on the part of the police.
Well, that would at least offer a tentative or an intermediate solution, and then if we wanted to get into it more, depending on how the season goes or a couple of seasons. But I still think, you know, you, then you, then we have to talk to the chief, you know, or Mel, or someone, exactly, you know, what are the criteria that we are looking for so that it's applied consistently and if...
I don't know if he wants that flexibility or would rather have a bright line rule. He may say, "I don't want to have to make this judgment call. Tell me what you want."
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on that? I think if we, if we vote in favor, it stays the way it is. If we voted down, we could change "shall" to "may." What do you think, Lynn? Your, your motion?
Well, actually, you don't have to do anything. If you don't do anything, then the ordinance as it is stays.
I think what Lynn's point is, get this off.
Get off, Jeff.
Yeah, I agree.
Jeff's motion is, I don't want this on the agenda for the next...
This is the thing, it's worked perfectly for all these years. One person comes in...
Well, it hasn't worked perfectly. I mean, I have had complaints and so on, but...
Well, I know, but, you know, why? Because they didn't move their car, right?
Probably.
All right, so, I mean, it isn't like this is a secret. It says, "No parking everywhere along the city on these signs." It's worked well, we have the best maintained streets of anywhere during a snowstorm. So I think we just move on, let the owners of the buildings negotiate with Hans or the library or wherever they want to park, the church, there could be lots of places. And I, again, I don't think there's that many people out there that haven't already found a place. So I'm not sure we're wasting, not wasting, I will take that back, using all of our time talking about something that works well. Let's move on to stuff that we have to fix, not things that we could fix. And I don't even know if we want to put "may" in there because this way you shall move your car. You know, "may" could be, there's lots of times that you go to bed and it's perfectly fine out, and you wake up in the morning and there's six inches of snow, and you wouldn't necessarily know that if you've gone to bed. So I just think it's black and white, let's leave it black and white, and let's move on.
So we really don't even need a motion, we can just drop it?
If there's no other motion, the ordinance stays the way it is.
All we're doing is letting it, letting it continue the way it is.
Well, I don't know if everybody else agrees with that, but...
Well, otherwise, somebody's got to propose something else, language change.
Well, there's...
And I'm not proposing this language, I just handed it out to the council to be...
So if, if we, do we need to vote on that because we have a motion and a second? You want to remove it?
We can withdraw.
Okay, you're going to withdraw that?
Yeah.
And is everybody okay with this then at this point?
Can you check with the chief and see what he would think about "may"? Whether he'd be like, "Oh, yeah, that makes sense," or if he's like, "Mm, no, I don't want that." Just to find out and bring it back next time. Right, I just, just asking if he just says, "No," or rather than...
I can ask him.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. I mean, you know, it can be revisited by another council sometime, too. It's not, it's...
It can always be revised.
Yeah, I can tell you, Mark, one of the things is the word "shall," you know, when you bring "may" into it, then you end up with, you know, "He didn't get a ticket, she did", blah, 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 you know, this, that discretion. I mean, it's not, certainly people speed through Virgin and don't get tickets, but that's, my sense is that's what he will likely say.
I think you're probably right, but never hurts ass.
Okay, all right, so 5B, alcohol beverage use on city property ordinance. There's a packet, Mel prepared.
I copied this ordinance for the city council just so that you had it, and I actually was a little surprised, to be honest with you. Over the past few months, there has been some discussion about the serving of alcohol on the city green during certain events, and it's, in part, this is why Ian is here. So what I actually was a little surprised to find is that as city manager, I have the authority to grant that.
Me, too. I thought it was the city council.
Yeah, and, and I mean, I don't mind, I don't mind making decisions, but I, I felt that since the city council did not feel that tobacco, the city green is now a tobacco-free, I don't know if that's an ordinance or a policy, but, but anyway, you have that, and I just think that the council, instead of me, just because it doesn't say that you can't, and if somebody comes in and, you know, fences off an area, if they can get the outside, this is not the only approval that one needs to do this, to have a so-called beer garden or whatever you want to call it on city property. They would need a approval from the Department of Liquor Control, might need, you know, it's funny, I don't know if you need city, I don't think you need city council approval, Joan, right? You would have, you and Melissa would have the right to issue, you know, if somebody had an event.
Well, now, they have so many liquor license...
Event things?
...permits out there. I mean, there's at least 20 of them now, and it all depends who's going to own the event. And other distributors will work under the one who's owning the event. These liquor licenses are turning very time-consuming at City Hall. I say liquor control should be...
So what's the difference between this and outdoor consumption?
Oh, it's terrible. It takes a half hour to read them all. What criteria?
Uh, these are events. That's the only, that's the only difference. The outside seating licenses or outside, outside consumption permits, those are really ongoing things. This is really about an event where somebody wants to serve alcohol. You know, it's like, for instance, you know, the fire, the fire department, once a year, they have a dinner where there may or may not be alcohol, all right? I approve that, all right? Because I really feel, you know, 35 firefighters that come here once a year, you know, that, but I make it clear that they have to bring their own alcohol. You can't buy a keg, you know, somebody can't buy a keg in Texas, but you could, you can do that here, all right? And I've approved that. That is 30, 30 or 35 city employees on city property in a very contained situation. What is being contemplated here is a fenced-off area on the city green for the general public, you know, to consume. And if really, if, if the city council has no issue with that, I'll grant those. What I didn't want to do was just grant those and the city council saying, "Mel, what the hell?" So I'm just throwing that out. Everybody loving this ordinance?
So do we need one, a public event permit from you?
They don't need a public assemblage permit, Joan, because that's, that is, not everything needs a, the public assemblage ordinance that we have is really for places that don't normally have public assemblages, so, okay? So like when the parish hall is used for an event or when there's a play at the high school, any place like the Opera House that is, that ordinance is written such a way that that's what they, is, it has approval. Now, these are for events, so in essence, the city green, that is a place where there are events, have them all the time. We don't grant a public assemblage permit, that's what that space is for, it's for the public to use.
So Mel and I were talking about this, I guess, earlier this week or end of last week, and, you know, he, he feels there might be certain circumstances, particularly if it's an event like on, on the main, you know, city green or something, where it's just, there ought to be more input, we should consider it. Each application could be unique, and there might be reasons to either accept or deny the application. And I, and I think that has merit, and it sounds like, you know, the easiest way, hopefully the best way, if you were able, if you were able to delete number two...
And you're in section what?
On page three.
Section five.
Section five, number, delete, section five, number two, which deals with the manager making the decision, and then go down to section six, which relates to the Bixby Library. The wording under the Bixby Library has to come before the city council, and that could be for all applications on municipal property. And that would probably cover what we need, and everyone would have to come to the city There's no appeal process at that point because the city council is the ultimate decision-maker, so you'd have to delete section seven, I assume. But, you know, and I'm not saying we have to approve this tonight, but I'm thinking that might be a way to clean it up pretty easily and make it consistent, not only for the Bixby Library, but for all municipal property. Rennie?
Well, unless the city manager just doesn't want to do it, I don't, I don't, I don't have any problem with the city manager approving these things, really. I mean, and, and if he doesn't approve it, the appeal is to the city council, I don't have a problem with it the way it is. And it's been on, apparently, it's been on the books for a long time because I don't show any, any, any time when it's been amended, although we just started with our ordinances showing the dates when they've been amended, so we had an idea how many changes have been. But, you know, unless, unless the manager just doesn't want to do that and turn it over to the city council, leave it the way it is.
I'm okay leaving it the way it is. I just wanted to make sure that the city council is aware. I, to my knowledge, for as long as I've not just worked for the city, but lived in this city, I do not recall serving alcohol on the city green, okay? Now, I just can't, but I don't have perfect recollection, all right? And to be honest with you, I actually was... And to be honest with you, I actually was surprised that it was permitted, that it was like, what are you, what, could have done that all along, you know? It's like, you know, when the hitmen play on Friday night before Virgens Day, all right? You know, if, if somebody wanted to get the necessary state permits required, you could, you could have that there, all right? Now, if, if city council members feel that that's fine, all right, then that's what can happen. But if the city council says, oh, hold on, that, this really is a, you know, this is a family event, this is a hitman, this is whatever, there really should not be there. That's the kind of things that should, you know, I'd like to, it's not about public safety, you know, it's, it's, I'm not, I'm not necessarily, necessarily worried about fencing it off. I think it's, it's more about is that how the park should be used for those kinds of events.
We actually did one time on Virgens Day, they had some breweries down at the Falls, that's back when we were utilizing every space in town for Virgens Day. And there weren't any incidents or anything, but we did get a lot of complaints about they didn't feel it was appropriate for a family event, so...
Interesting. Okay. Um, well, Rennie, go ahead.
Well, I just think that if we're relative to events and, and attracting people and so on, almost every event that I can look around the state has probably some alcohol component in it. It attracts people.
It's become more prevalent, there's no question about that.
And, and I don't, I don't necessarily think that means that we have to condone it. But, the reality of it is, is that we want, if we want to have events that people will come a long way to, a lot of those have alcohol. And a lot of these alcohol vendors are big sponsors and really help out these events to occur. And if we're moving in that direction where we want to do more of those things, so more people get exposed to Virgens, more, more people come in and, and spend their money here, then I think that's a reality, that, that that's going to be there. God knows, Vermont has the most archaic liquor laws of just about any state in the Union, so it's pretty tight about how...
...per capita, anyplace else.
You know?
By far.
But, 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 and so, I, I shouldn't, certainly don't worry about whether there's enough safeguards about how that is managed because the state is pretty tight on that, particularly when it's outside of a building. So...
Well, we do have no brewery, and we have a cidery coming within the city, so it'd be nice to...
Well, and I suppose, if you leave your ordinance the way it is, you know, if, if for whatever reason Mel feels uncomfortable, he can come to the city council and just say, I want to make sure that, that this is approved by you guys because I just feel, whether it's Mel or another city manager...
It has to be turned within five days, or as granted, as, as approved.
Can I just ask a question, aside from Virgens Day, Joan, has this been, have we had people asking to serve alcohol or liquor on the city green, aside from that one instance where they ended up down the falls?
Yeah, and that was with Virgens Day, and I don't know if it was a place in Middlebury, Woodchuck, whatever, that was starting new. And this is back in rainy days, so it was quite a while ago. And it wasn't a huge success either, you know?
Well, I do think the prevalence is going to increase, to Rennie's point. I think, I'm surprised, frankly, that it's not, hasn't been more commonly asked of us or asked of Mel.
No, it would most likely be our businesses. We've had people who have had weddings on the green and they're only doing the ceremony there, they're moving on to have the reception somewhere. And we just say you cannot have alcohol on the green. And, oh, that's fine, and this is only the wedding.
Well, that's not the case, though, Joan, you've told people that, that's...
Well, I just make that statement so that they understand they cannot have alcohol on the city...
Without a permit.
I'd never offer.
Well, anyway.
That's why we haven't had...
This is the ordinance, and you can do it with a permit.
So, so, so anyway, I did, I did this really more for education, all right, than anything else, all right? So, let me just tell you, here's, here's the rules. I can tell you that I'm quite confident that I can sort out whether or not somebody has put in a full application and submitted a safety plan and how this thing is going to work, and I'll prove it. And if, if, if there's no issue with this, you'll, you won't hear about this again. If there is, you will.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, all right, well, let's move on then from there. 5C, resurfacing tennis courts, three estimates were included in the packet here.
Well, anyway, yeah, partly, Bill, I got a little bit, I got a little confused by the council's action in this regard, all right? But anyway, the bottom line is, is I sent an email out to the three bidders to, because I think one of the things we talked about, like do it with the fall, do it, your directive was, Mel, go do it, do it this fall, all right? And that's fine...
If possible.
If possible, and so that's what I did, all right? So, I went out and reached out to folks. And I, I have these email exchanges here. One of the things is, is that to, to do this, the temperature needs to be 50 degrees around the clock, okay? And so, we made, number one, we may be at a point where you can't do it, all right? Number one. I just want to let you know that, all right? But the other thing is, we, we didn't really talk about where the money's coming from. And so, what I, let me just tell you, let me just tell you what my recommendation is. I gave you these three quotes, my recommendation is to go with the, the higher quote. It's, you know, it's not, if you kind of look through it, it's, you know, one of the quotes is $32,000 if you do this right-way thing. Let me, let me just tell you, this court, these courts were constructed in 1977, 1978. Yes, that's, that'll, that will be my, that'll be my recommendation. The, the courts were constructed in 1970, 78. And in speaking to these folks that are in this business, they say that, that, that tennis courts, unless you have some really good under drainage and whatever, you know, anything over 25 years is, you're doing pretty well. So, one of the reasons why you're seeing the excessive cracks down there is because, number one, it's more than 25 years, considerably more than 25 years, and number two, there really isn't some sophisticated drainage system in there. And so, it's going to be more susceptible to frost and heaving and this type of thing, so that's what you're seeing. So, one of the things is, let me just tell you, the firm that had this $25,000 to do this cracking and the other firm, when you multiply 1,681 times $15 and do that math, there is, in my opinion, you would not do that. I mean, these courts are 30 some-odd years old, you don't go spending 20, you don't go spending 30, $25,000 to repair cracks because you really have an underlying thing. You would rather take that money and rebuild the courts as opposed to fixing cracks. So, in my, in my opinion, that's off the table. So, when you take that off the table and you look at the quotes, the, the reason why I'm recommending the $11,000 quote is that that is three, it's a different system and includes three layers of, of coating on there, number one. Number two, this company is willing to come here and do the patching this fall. Not do the courts, but come and do the patching this fall and then return in the spring. So, for all of those reasons, I'm, I'm recommending that we go with, with Vermont Tennis Court at $11,472. The problem is, is that we, I don't have any money.
It's all you talk about.
So, anyway, that's my recommendation. We probably should, I mean, my recommendation is to have that come from the Watershed Recreation Reserve Fund, but you, you might want me to talk to you about that fund before you, unless you want to live dangerously, it's okay with me. You ready? Want to talk about the fund?
Uh, let's go to 5D, allocation from Watershed Recreation Reserve.
5D, okay, so...
How ironic, it's right after this.
Yes, so we'll defer the tennis courts for a second. Well, actually, yeah. C is done, D, because it's the third part of D, isn't it?
Right.
Uh, so, allocation from Watershed Recreation Reserve. What I included in your packet was a copy of the existing policy. And this policy goes back to 1996 when the voters originally approved, or thereabouts, when they approved the sale of the watershed property for the $300,000. In 2000, in March of 2012, we had accumulated nearly $400,000, the, the number is actually $394,710.41 that we had accumulated through June 30th of 2012. And so, when the voters allowed an increase of their reserve fund from $300,000 to $350,000 in March of 2012, when we got to June 30th of 2012, the balance of the fund, like I said, was $394,710. And we withdrew $44,710 from that fund on June 30th to reset it to 350. And at the time, the policy was written such that it went into this recreation, recreation facilities maintenance reserve fund, all right? Now, I'm going to take the blame for this, but I can tell you, when I came back to work here, I thought like, what the hell was I thinking of? The fact that we have this reserve fund that makes interest that we're going to take out and put into another fund that we're going to allocate some money to the pool. Why we're doing all of these steps to get money from point A to point B makes no sense. Let's just leave the money there, let it accumulate. We can pay attention to 75% of earnings if we really want to subject ourselves to only, to not spending more than 75% of earnings. That's just a spreadsheet. I got that spreadsheet. I can tell you how much earnings we, we've had every month, going back to the day that we started this fund. We don't need to move money into these funds and pay auditors and everything to audit these things, we, we can, we can handle it.
I thought you liked doing that.
I love doing it, but it really, it's, it's getting old, okay? All right, so anyway, so let's just, I want to just kind of fast forward to today, all right? I could bore you with how much the earnings have been all these years, and I could bore you with how much money we've spent over the years, but let's just fast forward to today. As of today, based on the value of the funds, we have $391,000 today. And in part, it's, it's really because we have this money invested in a combination of CDs and, and municipal bonds, or various types of government bonds, I should say. And they change in value. And we, on occasion, we buy bonds at a premium to chase a higher rate. Sometimes we buy bonds at a discount, so that you can buy a $100,000 bond for $95,000, but you get a lower interest rate. We do this, that's what we do. That's what Joan and I worked with Aaron Robertson at Edward Jones to get this portfolio of, of CDs and bonds. And there's, in this fund, there's probably 12 different things, Joan, you know, a $45,000 bond, a $40,000, a 20, and a 5, and a 25, and three other CDs. And you meld it all together, and that, that $350,000 in earnings, it made us $15,000 in FY '16. The value increase was $34,410. Now, just because the value went up 34,000, you know, you, you shouldn't necessarily scream with joy because it's just a moment in time. When you buy, if you buy a $100,000 municipal bond with a 6% interest rate, that is a, and let's say we paid $100,000 for this three years ago, it's obviously a very attractive instrument. It's, if it's a good municipality, good government bond, $100,000, 6%, it's great. When we bought it, that's what we paid. Because it's such an attractive instrument, that $100,000 bond is actually worth, you know, 107, 100 and whatever, it's climbing in value, all right? And so, that climb in value is one of the reasons why the, the difference in value from July 1, 2015 to June 30, 2016 is the accumulation of that value, of that $34,000 that has occurred. We don't typically sell these bonds, we buy them because of the interest rate, all right? But we, you know, we will sell them on occasion, but we typically, I won't be here, I won't be here in 2042, but you could hold this until maturity. Some of these bonds are callable, some of them aren't. You're going to hold it to maturity. Now, if you hold it to maturity, it doesn't matter that that $100,000 bond at some point was worth $107,000, because if you hold it to maturity, the last month, it's only worth $100,000. So, so don't think that, oh gosh, we made $34,000, let's spend it, because down the road, that value is going to diminish, okay? So...
But you're also going to be earning interest on it as well.
And we'll have other bonds that will be doing the same thing. So, so anyway, today, Aaron, Aaron Robinson brought up a statement of the thing, and it's $391,669. And if I went through a bunch of math to calculate how much earnings we've made since June 30th, 2012, and took 75% of it, I can assure you that we've probably spent more than the policy says that you have. I mean, just think about it. You spent 15, you know, just if you take that year, we made $15,000 worth of earnings. You multiply 15,000 times 75%, it equals $11,250. We allocated $9,000 to the swimming pool. We paid, we paid $1,827.70 to fund the swim team coaches, not this season, last season. We bought diving boards for $5,088, got the picture? Okay? So, we're, we're spending that faster, not a problem, got $391,000. So, we are, we are outside of the policy, no question about it, we're outside of it. But we're not outside the money, and we're not below the $350,000. And then I think that the end of the day, this policy was written to try to guide present and future councils to not go spending this money, they want to grow this thing. We've done that. So, this, I think that we, we, we have not yet pulled the $9,000, Joan, right? Out of this year for, we have not. We, the diving board was paid for, that's all paid for, so we have not pulled the $9,000. We have not yet pulled the 2,000, I wrote a check, there's a check in the warrants for $2,000 towards the pool inspection. We haven't pulled the 2,000, let alone the four, all right? So, what I'm recommending here is that an allocation, that we deviate from the policy and, and that the council allocate from the Watershed Recreation Reserve Fund, $4,000 for the pool inspection, because you did authorize that, but you didn't say where the money was coming from, so we need to, we need to do that. So, I'm recommending that you authorize $4,000 from the swimming pool, for the swimming pool inspection, $5,333.92 for replacing the pool valve, which basically will keep that from being in the pool budget, driving that into deficit. And recommend 10, $11,472 for Vermont Tennis Court surfacing to resurface the tennis courts.
Which is just under $21,000.
That's correct.
I'll make said motion. Second?
So, that really is digging into that, that, that over the 350 amount, we're basically...
Well, if it's 391 and we want to take $20,000 out, then we're still above the 35, or 350, but...
Yep, right. But you're surely out...
I don't think we're outside the policy, though, because it says city council may make special allocations, so, which is where we've got the diving boards.
You're right.
And these are sort of one, this isn't a, a normal annual thing.
Well, yeah, this is a double whammy with the tennis courts and the pool.
The pool inspection, the diving boards, and the tennis courts are once in a X number of year things.
I think you're right, I think you're right, Mark, that it does, I think you're absolutely right.
And if we do find that the pool needs a major repair...
Then we got a lot of fundraising.
Well, we have fundraising, but, but again, the water tower fund, if it's a capital improvement, that's another source that could be tapped. If it's something that is going to last us 25 years in terms of a repair or a repair, you know...
I'm sure that the swim team is going to do fundraising, I think we hit up the partnership for some help, we do the water tower, yeah, there's, but let's just cross fingers and Mel say, oh, you just need to change this filter, $29.95.
That would be wasting $4,000.
Yes, well, it would be set.
Anybody have any other questions or comments of Mel, or everybody understand the motion?
Who's second?
I did.
Rennie? Okay, all in favor? Okay, all in favor of the motion as presented, that money be taken out of the watershed recreation reserve fund, uh, in the amounts of $4,533.92 and $11,472. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. There you go, Mel, go crazy.
Great.
All right, revolving loan fund committee report, they met earlier today, and, Mel?
Lynn, Lynn made a motion, at the earlier meeting.
So... Lynn made a motion that was unanimously approved.
So this, just so we understand this, this committee makes a recommendation to the city council?
Correct.
Is that correct? So, okay, so you can bring us up to speed on the...
So the Regent's revolving loan fund committee is recommending a loan to Lincoln...
Geronimo.
Geronimo LLC for $95,000 with $20,000 left in reserve for the, their portion of the sidewalk.
Handicap access and sidewalk, street skate project.
That comes out of the 95, or on top of...
Correct, out of.
So 20,000 for the sidewalk, 75,000 for operations, is that essentially it? Or building improvements, is that what it's going for?
Yes.
Yeah. And so if, if, so that was the committee's recommendation, and what, uh, what I would be looking for would be for the council to approve that recommendation and authorize me to engage the city attorney to draft the appropriate real estate mortgage against that piece of property as security for that loan. It would be a 10-year loan, uh, at 5%. Obviously, the...
Four.
I'm sorry, you're right, 4%, I'm sorry, 4%, 4%. And obviously, we would structure payments in light of the, that only 75 would be released. We would end up with a, with really two amortization schedules, if you will, to, but both within that same 10-year period. But there would be no interest on the 20,000.
On the sidewalk.
That's correct.
Because we don't charge interest on those projects.
Well, no, there'll be interest on that, there'll be interest on that, but it'll be deferred while it's sitting in our account.
Okay, gotcha.
So moved if, Joan, you have enough to, to have us so moved, or do I have to try and repeat it?
Second.
Well, LoL knows what it's about.
And has part of this already been cut back for the Boys and Girls Club? Is that a, is their portion somehow, or is this a whole different part of the...
There's nothing cut back.
No, I mean, that the 20, they, they've got their money going somewhere, is all of this one thing...
We're dealing totally with the owner of the property.
Okay, never mind.
This is not a loan with the N, this is with the, with the antidote. This is a loan with the owner, Lincoln Geronimo owns the real estate.
And have a mortgage on the real estate, although it won't be the first, it'll be the second or the third conceivably, but...
Correct.
Got it.
Third.
Yes.
Never mind, yes.
I just wanna mention, I'm not sure that everybody in the council realize what the revolving loan fund is, and, um, it really, Mel could give you the history about when it started. Anyhow, we have this pot of money, and, um, it's available to use for certain kinds of business expansions and so on, with certain kinds of criteria. And quite frankly, if we don't use it, the state will take it back. The state would love to reuse that money, and so as long as we're using it, they don't go after it. But if we're not using it, they'll come after it, so...
There were three loans currently active? This will be the third?
Just two, this will be the third.
That's what I thought, okay. Gear Trail, and then the, no?
No, 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 the loans are sheer property, sheer cuts and sheer properties. One against the business, one against the real estate.
Okay.
And it's intended to be second or third lien. I mean, it's, it's not, you know, it's not the straight up, it's, it's a bridge loan, really, for activities.
Okay. So, are you set, Joan? You think you have everything? Okay, so, there's a motion made and seconded to take the recommendation of the Regent's revolving loan fund committee and approve loan in the total amount of $95,000 to Lincoln Geronimo LLC, I think it is. Said terms to be, well, are stated, and in the agreement will be drawn up by the city attorney.
Yeah, authorize Mel to engage the city attorney.
Okay, any discussion, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved. 5F, Ray Davidson Capital Equipment Committee report.
So committee, committee number three for Joan and I. Uh, we had a meeting of the Ray Davidson Capital Equipment Committee tonight. There, there is a policy, I probably could've put that in your, in your packets as well for more policy reading, uh, but it's, it's written similarly to the watershed, where there's a principal amount of 198,000 that Ray Davidson, longtime firefighter, in his will bequeath that sum of money to the city, and for the interest or earnings only to be used for the purposes of capital equipment. And, uh, that money has grown over the years, purchased a, purchased a vehicle, one of the trucks upstairs, the utility truck, was funded by a $26,000 allocation from that fund a few years ago. So since that time, that fund has continued to grow. The policy requires the committee to meet every May. I can confess that they have not met every May, because once they spent that 26,000, they really didn't have any money to talk about, alright? But, uh, but anyway, they met this evening, and there's a recommendation from that committee, and I will defer to Rennie.
Yes, um, the, um, the committee is recommending to the city council, and I guess I make this in the form of a motion, to allocate up to $5,000 for the purchase of a...
Mobile repeater.
Repeater. Um, and, uh, I'll explain what that is, sort of. There are repeaters for radios and so on that allow, uh, them to get transmissions when otherwise they can't. And they've found that in a number of places that they're going on emergencies, they, they can't communicate because the, the radios in the vehicles won't pick it up. So you can buy these repeaters, which allows a longer range, so the, the vehicles are in contact in, over hills and around places where they normally would not get any contact at all. So, um, it's really something that they need as a equipment, and it's appropriate for the fund. The fund was designed to, to buy equipment like this, and that's what they're asking for.
Okay.
So if that was a motion, I'll second that motion.
Yeah, yeah, it was a motion and explanation, yeah.
Up to $5,000 for a mobile repeater. Okay. Um, anybody have any questions about a mobile repeater, or comments? They think that's plenty of money to buy one?
Yeah, 'cause they thought it would be between $3,000 and $5,000, so...
So they'll, they'll look and find what they can in terms of what the requirements are. Any else have any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, Rennie, thank you, Mel, thank you, Ray Davidson. Uh, city manager, budget report, which was in the packet.
Yeah, as I mentioned just before we got started about the police department, in that it kind of, your budget that you got reflected as if the capital expense for the cruiser was overspent by $40,000, and I just wanna, just to confirm for the record, that both of those invoices to G Stone have been reclassified or recoded, so that each invoice for 32,000 plus dollars is coded such that, uh, 30,000 of each of those invoices will come out of the water tower continuation fund, which currently has a balance of some $80,000 or so, and that would be paid back over the next couple of years. So, uh, if you thought the bond skewed the numbers, Matt, last time, I think we got them really skewed now, so please disregard that, and we'll, uh, it'll be more, more like reality here the next time you see a budget. I actually have not, at the time, I wanna spend some time with George on a couple of his line items that are in a little trouble, vehicle maintenance, obviously, you know, we can't get rid of these cruisers fast enough. We, we did have to buy new tires, uh, this year, so that's one of the reasons why that's up there. And I think that, uh, George, you know, when the new budget came out, he's made a number of his purchases for the year already, but I, I will let him know that, that, um, it is only September, so when you see a line item that's 75 or 80% spent, you gotta pay attention to that. That's, uh, that's like, don't be buying, don't be buying anything else, uh, until next year, so I'll, I'll certainly deal with that. Relative to, I, I gave you the sheet, and you probably weren't like, huh, you just gave, gave that to us last time, why are you sending that to us? The audit, it says post audit here, and Penny and Teresa were here, not last week, but the week before, right, Joan? And, and the one thing that they uncovered was the fact that Joan started to do a journal entry dealing with police fines, and she must've hit cancel instead of save, because she went right to the next one, and did the next one perfectly. So there, the, some fines that ended up showing up in the current year were really last year's fines. And so you'll notice that our fund balance for the general fund is now 180,000 and some change, as opposed to 178. Uh, that, uh, was really, that was one journal entry that we needed to do to get that money in the right year. And the other thing that I never felt real confident as to how I had set up the accounting system for the, the, uh, the three-year loan with Deer Trails and their street skate project, and as it turned out, Teresa felt that the way that I handled it was okay, and but I didn't pull the trigger on setting up the deal with, uh, with David Pearson's street skate project. So that was the only other thing, it doesn't, doesn't affect any of the numbers that I shared with you, but anyway, those are all recorded, uh, they're in our, in our general ledger, uh, so that they won't be forgotten. That's the main thing. You wanna make sure that you book your loans, uh, so that they're in there, just in case.
So the, the fund balance, 180,000, 110.30.
Yep.
We've allocated 100,000 for this current budget year, which leaves us with a current balance of 80,000.
Cushion, yes, I call it a cushion.
And hopefully that will grow, not shrink over the next nine months.
Well, that's the cushion, that's correct, yes. Capital project, we've, I, I can't remember, I think I gave you something similar to this last time, and the main reason why I gave this to you is, you know, the numbers do keep, keep moving, but I, I, I don't think that the newest statement from, uh, from Edward Jones on the watershed has reflected in what was in your, what was in your packet. The other thing, the water, the water tower fund was just slightly overstated, and that's because there was an accounts payable to Tool Design that got paid in July for a June expense that didn't get reflected, so that in, in, in your report, I think, for FY16, it said 158,000. That number's really 157, so I just wanted to alert you to that. Obviously, money is coming in for the, uh, the AT&amp;T lease and Sprint leases, and you can see the way that this is set up, that, uh, 25% automatically goes into this continuation fund, which obviously is gonna be tapped for the, for the police cruisers. Item D, VOSHA inspection, just to give you a little backup, not all states have a state OSHA. Vermont is one that does. We have VOSHA, and it's, it's something that states do not have to have, it's an elective thing whereby if, if a state doesn't wanna take the federal grant, uh, then they don't have a statewide OSHA, and it's done by the feds. In Vermont, Vermont takes the federal grant, and they run a VOSHA safety program. Under that grant, uh, they are required to inspect a certain percentage of municipalities on an annual basis. And although I would love to say that, that we run the city every day, thinking that a VOSHA inspector's coming in the morning, alright? I'd love to be able to say that, but I'm not gonna say that, alright? So the day that the auditors arrived, uh, was the same day that VOSHA arrived, and so I wasn't able to be with the VOSHA inspectors, um, and, but passed them along to Jim Larrel and Rick Chaput. Matt Crowley, who works for Public Works, is also an officer in the fire department, brought him here, we sent him and introduced him to, Jase, George wasn't around. There's no advance notice, I mean, literally, they walk in, they were actually looking for the highest ranking official, and, and they said, are you Mr. Benton?
Oh, good. Well, thanks for not calling me.
Yeah, so anyway, I, so anyway, they've done their inspection, and there was a follow-up conference last, uh, last week, can't remember which day. There is no question in, there's no question, we are gonna get cited. I have, you know, there are, there was some, some things that they found. I mean, I'll, I'll note a couple things. One is, um, labeling of liquids, alright? Like for instance, at the Public Works garage, they had a, a one gallon container of sewer dye, which is really Kool-Aid, is what it is. It's dye that's used to go off and poured in the line, and they had made two gallons of it, and went out to do a job, and only used one, and so this gallon of red solution in a container was unlabeled, that's a no-no. And I under, you know, you know, I think we all understand why that's the case. Sewer plant, there was a number of, a lot of the chemicals, you know, obviously Rick knows what's in them, but that's not how it works. Everything has to be labeled, and you have to have an MSDS sheet on everything. So chemical, chemical handling, all of that, you know, we, we fell short of the mark, so there's no question that we're gonna get cited for that. In the Headworks building, there, there was discovered what we call the lakeside unit. Sometime it'd be good for, we've talked about having the council take a tour of the sewer plant, and if you, it's really a great place to tour.
I love it.
But anyway, in the Headworks building, there actually was an open channel, uh, which is not necessarily a big deal, but it was just in advance of this lakeside unit, which is this auger that pulls up, uh, it cleans a bar rack of rags. And so you can, and I don't need to give you much more of a description about, you know, an open channel. We all know, we all know where it is and whatever, so you think about, you know, farm equipment and augers and this type of thing, that, so they were, and so we actually, during the conference, we talked about what can, what should we, what could we do here to have a spring loaded, uh, so that they grate, comes down, 'cause you, we do have to access this thing and clean it periodically. So it's those kinds of things that come up, and it'll be another month or so, uh, before we get the official report. I have, you know, I don't know what level of penalties we're gonna see, we will, we'll find out when we get there, so...
But he plans on appealing regardless of what the penalty is.
Maybe, maybe, we'll just see, let's just see what it says, okay?
See how little it is.
They're gonna common that you have an opportunity 30 days to fix whatever needs to be fixed prior to assessing a fine, if they come back, you know, 45 days later, Mel, we haven't done the work.
Oh, we have, yeah. We, some of the things that they found, we've already taken care of. We, we know what they found. We will, we will move forward in advance of this, and so that we can, you know, we, we certainly wanna be on... Oh, George, oh, sorry, George. So...
I'm saying, so there's not automatically a fine assessed, or...
There's not automatically, but I, there's no doubt...
There's likely gonna be a fine assessed.
There's no doubt in my mind that we're, that there will be a fine. There's no doubt in my mind. I don't know how much it's gonna be, but there's no doubt in my mind. So, that's that. I'll share, when I get it, I'll share. I, under other topics of interest, just wanna report on Vermont gas, where there's been a lot of communication relative to insurance, and we aren't there yet. And so I just wanted to let you know, we're, we're getting there, we'll, we'll, we'll get there, but we aren't there yet. So, just wanted to report on that. Lynn was absolutely right, I can tell you, when I sent the, the agreement to the LCT, they were really surprised at the, at the level of limits. And, and, but we don't, we, we have a certificate that showed what they have, and we're, we're still working on, we're still working on that.
Good, good.
That's, that's all I had, Bill.
Two quick things. We started looking at ordinances, gosh, it was probably close to two years ago, and we got some of them rewritten, some of them kind of got bogged down. Mel and I talked, we'd like to get them, go through them and get them done, and get them cleaned up and so on, so what we're gonna try and do is, one at a time, it'll be in a packet, you can look at it, review it, we can have a discussion, try and deal with it within, you know, maybe two meetings or something, and that way we'll all be a part of it, we can have the discussion, and then, you know, move it into official ordinance dumb. ordinance dumb, and then we'll move on to the next one, so you can look forward to that. The other thing, which I don't think Mel told us about, was the master plan book, Mel and Shannon gave it a very, very fine-toothed editing comb, and it was not part of the, of the budget necessarily, but we have about four hundred and seventy dollars, four hundred and fifty dollars left, and so regional planning is going to fine-tune it with all of these, you know, probably mostly small edits, and we are going to print as many copies as we can with the four hundred and fifty dollars, it probably is about twenty or so, twenty-five, so it'll be available at the library at City Hall, people can, you know, borrow it, check it out, you know, the partnership can have one for their office. And I think what we want to do is, at some point, you know, do something, a public event once this is published, so people can have it, probably do something with the partnership, and, and, you know, bring it to the public's attention that it's done, and what do we want to, where do we want to go from here? So that's it.
Yeah, I'm hoping that that will be, since there's no meeting on October eleventh, you know, now I, I'm, I'm hoping that this will be completed and, and published for distribution at your next meeting.
Yep, good.
And it'll be available digitally as well, I assume?
It's a big document.
It is on the website now, it's, I think, yeah, it's like, it's like the final draft, so it's, most of it's there, there will be a few tweaks, I don't, we probably could, when, once it's all finished, we could probably re-put it up on the, on the same, I mean, there's the document, and there's an appendix that's like three times the size of the document, so...
Right, right.
But, yeah, we can figure that out, I think. Anybody else have anything? If not...
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second. Thank you, Lowell and Rennie, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night.